I only have one question.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting now.
Okay.
I just wanted you to get ahead by reading that. And now I'm gonna open the meeting and I've taken the attendance and I know everybody's here. And we'll all vote if there's any issues to vote on tonight, because there we are.
Seven of us.
Excuse me?
There's seven of us, I didn't count.
Good. Okay.
I'm glad you came.
Pointing out the fact that there were exactly seven of us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, you had a comment on the minutes.
I did. I just asking the clarification on the Whitney Center one where it says Whitney Center's polling place needs to be renamed. You meant, I guess you know, you just meant that he meant to, we may have to replace it or, yeah, just...
I'm not sure what has to, something has to be reworded. I think it's the electioneering area around it.
Oh, okay.
I think that's the biggest issue. I don't think we have to rename the Whitney Center.
Okay, so you said rename, you mean...
I know, I make mistakes constantly.
Yeah, I just didn't understand.
Right, that was a...
You mean, is it reword the voting area, so it's not rewarding them?
Yeah, it was...
Is there an audit ordinance? Do we have a selectmen's, what is it?
We...
Or is it an RSA or what?
There was, I haven't caught the agreement I left at home, I'm sorry, but there was another revise which I haven't seen.
Well, it was the wording for the electioneering and all that was done for the town hall.
Yeah, but the wording, wording in what?
In ordinance.
Wasn't it a selectmen's ordinance?
I thought it was.
I think it is.
Okay, so that's what you're having to worry about.
So you're saying it has to be updated, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm thinking that really the selectmen need to word that, we can help. I'm not sure that that's our area.
Do you think that it would be theirs one day? The selectmen wouldn't it be their area?
I would think so, but anyway...
This is just notes.
John brought it up, I put it in there. It helps to have things like that in the public record so that whatever discussion goes forward has been noted.
Why don't we just say, brought up the fact that the ordinance in the election ordinance needs to be reworded.
Reexamine?
Needs to be updated to use the, for the, using the Whitney Center as a polling place. So strike the last four words and add...
And use the...
The wording in the election ordinance.
Did you nail down the wording, Sam?
Um, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
The wording in the election ordinance needs to be reworded.
Needs to be updated on that.
Updated.
To, for, for using the Whitney Center's...
Or to accompany the Whitney Center or some of that.
To use the Whitney. And I'll just put in parentheses "electioneering" because that seems to be the main issue that's going on.
And then just a minor formatting where you've got number four is discussion of the grammar school, but actually the third point should have its own head as far as master plan, because I think that's what we were looking at all the way through.
All right, I've noted those. Yeah, I guess they're amendments to minutes.
Make a motion, we accept them as amended.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There they are. Okay.
On that?
I'm gonna take, oh, is this on the minutes?
Yeah, just, or, do we have any insight into whether or not we can get someone to do the minutes? Or is, or is that, you know, and then my question on that, how do you pay for that? Does the town pay for it? Does that come out of our budget?
No, see, that came out of our budget.
And we only have a thousand dollar budget.
What are you looking for?
Scraps of paper to make notes on.
It's a copy of the minutes.
I had, oh, I must have put it back in my bag.
Did I go and check?
If you don't need...
Yeah, I have one.
Yeah.
I can hold it while, so...
No, no, I'll use, no.
Would the pastors always gone in-house and ask the girls and...
No, that was, that's when Ella was doing it and then she was...
She was getting paid per hour. Ella. It wasn't costing you a hundred and fifty as per hour.
Do we play it out to bid, do we go to the selectmen and ask them? Just wanted to know.
Okay, so...
Not that I don't think you're finished, but, you know, it's a...
That isn't really dealing with the minutes and I'm gonna go through the public comment.
Okay.
So anybody out there have any comments they'd like to bring up that are not on the agenda? No, okay. And now we will head into, and I will recognize you. Well, it's just a kind of a format, you know, that we go through and I'm not trying to cut you off because I think you're absolutely right, we need to deal with it. And now, how, how should we take the minutes? Minutes question. Okay, so that's what I did from last week. Had them type it up, correct the spelling and, I don't know, it's not a word-for-word.
Yeah, if you weren't here, you really wouldn't know what went on.
But we have a word-for-word record.
If there are no technical glitches.
But that's anyplace.
Yeah.
I mean, we could have tape recorders.
And I feel this is enough to suffice for what was discussed and you, you know...
Yeah, but if you weren't here...
But, yeah, that's what...
They have to go get that.
Are we saying...
Well, I don't know, and so are you saying that you would like to have a word-for-word document?
Well, you know, if nobody attended, they'd have to get the recording or the disc. To me, it should be available.
It is.
Well, I want to hear that again.
It's on the internet, yeah.
So you think that it should be a word-for-word document of our discussions?
I think...
I really...
I know I'm old-fashioned, but personally, I think word on paper is much better.
Okay, now, as far as word on paper, there's two, two ways of taking minutes. One is like a court recording where it's what everybody said and verbatim, or it could be a summary of the discussion.
Yeah, well, that's what that is and what I'm saying is if someone come in and picked it out of the wall, they really wouldn't know.
Right, so what you're saying is that this, this is perhaps too summarized and that what we need is a more...
A little more information?
Well, considering, considering the last meeting, I think this is a fairly good listing of some of the salient points that were brought up because...
We didn't get any depth, that's really...
Yeah, that's what I said, I think this is fine for this, I think it's a week-by-week thing, and I'm meeting by meeting for this, and see, this seems, nothing was really discussed that had to be verbatim.
Like, there are some meetings, and I agree with you, that I would like to see how we came to a decision and we didn't come to any less, you know, so that's okay. But if we do come to decisions or make motions, yeah, it would be nice for the public to understand, you know, how we came to that decision, that's the only thing about good minute-taking.
Is it like a mandatory or something? I know they have to do it at the select...
This is enough to...
No, that would be technically by rules, that's fine.
But I guess, the question really you started asking, you're, what you're performing, is I think this is adequate until we find someone...
Right.
To, to, to take...
No, I was just stating that I think...
But I guess we're asking, are we gonna find somebody? That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
And, you know, because there are gonna be meetings where we are gonna wanna more in-depth.
While we go into the master plan more and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And how we came to that decision and, you know, I've always been for more transparent, more detailed minutes. Martha Tobin, who does the selectmen's minutes, gets it great detail, you know, and some do less, some do more. Ella did a fair job, she did a, you know, very good job of kinda getting the sense of what was going on.
What was, Ella's minutes were often, what she submitted was a rough draft and then various members of the planning board would go through it and get it, some of the, some of the discussion needed to be brought a little bit more in focus.
And that's another part of this conversation I'd love to have is how was that handled? How are we gonna handle that going forward? In other words, a lot of times I've, you know, heard, you know, that the minutes have been edited and re-edited and then we see them and shouldn't we be doing that? I just thought as a group, should we...
Yeah, well, part of it is just some of the edits, some of the minutes that I was, you know, working with, it was just a matter of, in some cases, you know, any of you written a rough draft, you know, it is, you know, it's grammar and spelling and, and format and so on, and so there was a lot of that, but there were times where there was some discussion where the subject or the, the content of the discussion was not accurately recorded by the minute taker and so that needed to be fleshed out a little better.
I remember a few times also when we would get the minutes emailed to all of us prior to the meeting saying, everyone said, sign off.
Yes, that we could sign off on the draft.
That's only like another complicated thing. You know, I remember a few times that happened, but...
But that was nice to have, you know, because we could actually comment on the draft ourselves and correct the spelling and the grammar and then come here and do it at the table.
Yeah, well, I don't think that we should be spending meeting time correcting grammar and spelling and format. I mean, that, that...
Love your argument.
Yeah.
I agree with you there.
So it, content...
I guess it still leaves us with the question of what we're gonna do going forward.
Yeah.
In terms of who.
Do we put that out, do we hand it paper or do we just ask the girls in the office?
The women in the office, I don't think the selectmen want them in this position. I will ask though, because that's the most convenient thing.
Yeah.
Would be to have...
You said Martha Tobin is the...
One of the Jewleys sit in the meeting, if they cared to do that. Now, you said that Ella was being paid by the hour to be here. Was that good or bad?
It was less expensive if you did it.
I can't hear you.
It was less expensive if you're here for two hours, that's it.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
That much, she also paid because of the time to write it up afterwards.
Well...
Because that's, you know, one of her hours.
That part of it they're doing anyway, I think, because...
Yeah, I think that's part of the job.
Well, so with Martha Tobin, was that the arrangement when she came?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Yeah, maybe it's the select...
I think she did.
I asked her when I found out that Ella was not going to be allowed to take the minutes at our meeting. This was a office policy thing. I never did get to the bottom of what happened or why, but that wasn't my area. Anyway, I'll start with the office people and see if they're interested or can or is appropriate.
It would be good to get somebody who is, understands some of the issues that we are dealing with.
Martha would be awesome, she's a planning board at Conway, she's been on that for years, you know, but I don't know if she can, you know, what her schedule's like or what she charges or, she is very good.
Well, the last one was a hundred and fifty dollars. That's what we were charged.
The last meeting, so...
Two meetings ago, I think, was it two meetings ago?
Two, yes, because you did this...
Yeah, I did it from last one, the one before that, I'm not sure you were there. And, yes, her bill was a hundred and fifty dollars for that meeting.
So in the meanwhile, you, I assume you're okay taking the minutes?
Oh, yeah.
And are you okay with the summary of the minutes?
I don't care the majority, I, you want an opinion, I express my opinion.
No, that's fine, and I think the question is, are you happy enough with this?
I don't care. Well, I don't care.
Yes, ma'am.
I might suggest that Dick, if you wanna, you know, do the minutes, that the rest of us be taking notes as well so that we're all able then to contribute.
We could add, yeah.
If there are things that, that Dick doesn't get down on his notes, that we might have, that sort of thing, so that...
That's fine, because that's what I do anyway. I take my own notes.
Right.
Of every meeting.
And if you could get the minutes emailed to us a couple days before the, the meeting, then we'd be able to do some comparisons and maybe be succinct.
So can I take it when we come in?
And actually, the minutes are supposed to be posted on RSA, this is what Betsy was saying, it's how many?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
I believe it's...
We've never really done it, it's hard to do, it's hard for you and somebody paid to do that. But if, if they need to be there, they have to be there instead of whoever.
Well, I would think since, isn't the video available on the internet?
That might be true, yeah, that might be true. We might be covered by that.
Yeah. There is a record available and that's where I was struggling personally with this editing thing. What do you put out? Do you put out the minutes before we've had a chance to approve them?
Well, would they do the selectmen and they just say they're not approved?
Right. Have we ever used the detailed minutes for anything?
Well, I do.
We read them, but I don't think we've had to go back to consult them over an issue.
No.
I can't remember it.
But they're not so much for us as for the public.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Right.
Hopefully, we remember, my theory.
But, but so what? I mean, I, I'm in favor of the outline system like Dick does because it mentions what we discussed and if we made any decisions, what the decision was. As far as the detail on that goes, of what value is that to anyone if you disagree?
Well, now someone came to a decision. In other words...
But since you have it here though, that's like, it's not like we're ignoring the fact.
Correct. I mean, you've got a good point that this exists, but it couldn't hurt to have minutes.
Okay, also, if we were into an area where we're actually taking a vote, I would be more specific in what I write down. You know, this is part of just my thinking, it's like, this dialogue is good amongst us, but I don't think every word of it has to be down on paper. You know, I think the key issues we're discussing, how we as a board are going to deal with our minutes, and I think that's kind of the crux of the discussion here and then...
And then what our conclusion is and then move on to the next topic.
Yeah, so...
So you are gonna look into someone?
Oh, yeah, I, I said I would talk to the people in the office first to see if any of them are interested or able to do that. I'll talk with Martha to see if she has any feelings about an ongoing position monthly and certainly for any public sessions that we have to, I'm not public, what am I trying to...
Public hearing?
Yes, public hearing, thank you. We, I'd certainly wanna have somebody else, because that would be, I think, too busy to try to take minutes and run a meeting with a whole bunch of other people around, so, I mean, I think that that could work out, but, you know, I'll certainly keep sniffing around. I also don't wanna run up our bills, I mean, I don't wanna use all our money just for minutes of our monthly meeting, I mean, if that's...
Also, there was a good point brought up and we said also is that the minutes have to be posted within three days, even if it says unapproved minutes.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I easily could've done that, no...
No, you're saying go and fill it, it's going backwards.
Yeah, and don't, you know, somebody volunteer, I don't think has to worry about that, you know.
All right. Let's see, I had a, an email from Betsy. John Allen, Betsy is just out of the hospital, had her foot am, uh, operated on to avoid all that. And something, and Scott had a family commitment, so they all contacted me. Betsy was wondering about the North Country Council, the build-out, and that has just gotten finalized from the selectmen and I don't know what happened, so the paperwork didn't go through or what, but it just, so at the last selectmen's meeting, that was properly invoiced and all the back and forth that has to go on for that and they'll get their check, and then Avatar is what Julie number one in the office told me, you know, we have two Jewleys now, so, that Avatar got North Country Council all the information from town about what is built and also, you know, land that's available.
Just all the property information, lots, lots of them.
Yeah.
So, so the North Country Council has that information, hopefully it's compatible with their analysis software.
Yes.
So they're just gonna start? Any, any word on how long this takes or anyone have an idea?
I'm gonna, now I'm gonna, I had just found out that it went through, so I'll make a contact with them and see if they need anything else or, you know, I'm still hoping to have some preliminary meetings with them.
Can we still get someone here?
I believe so.
Yeah, good.
The woman I talked to up there just said it may have to be like a special meeting during the day, because she's not really available for our evening stuff, but that be, I said, that's all right, you know, whoever can be here will be here and we'll work that out. So that's moving forward. Got a nice letter from the Upper Saco Valley, newsletter from Saco Valley Land Trust, which we get periodically, but there's a very interesting short brief history, geological history of the area that's really, for just a little one-page thing, it's really good. Anybody wants to read that or take it with them? And then, what do you think? Anybody done any homework on how we're gonna move ahead with the master plan?
Well, I read through it and I'm extremely impressed. I thought it was the, the previous one, I thought it was very well put together and written up. I did make some, you know, marks on it, you know, the old marker where things needed to be updated and that kind of stuff, and I figured we'd all go over it page by page or whatever it was and see how everybody else thought about it, but, I mean, I don't know how to proceed with this, so, but I just did it.
No, I think that's great.
Okay.
That's a great start right there.
That's what we all were supposed to, as I understood from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, you did mention something about that, and I thought maybe I would go through it, so I wasn't so far behind everybody.
I felt miserably sorry, I really put yesterday aside to do just that and, boy, it didn't happen.
Or like the library stents or...
Yeah.
Yeah. Dick, I had loaned you that printout, if I could just look, I was not able to...
Yes, ma'am.
To get it.
Held right under it, I did.
It's saying how master plan has changed as far as, they didn't want goals, objectives, et cetera.
Oh, they changed the, it's vision now, or was...
Vision, yeah. So we, we had it as overall goals, then policies and objectives within policy, which actually I think it works quite well, but then they wanted it... Well, you do say vision statement and goals down here.
Well...
Yeah, but they don't want that one.
Well, those are the, the two parts that are required.
Oh, okay, okay.
Of that and what, the natural resources? Is that the second one that, I read that over too. But the RSAs deal with it on just those two things, the rest of it are suggestions and we can put them in or take them out or not deal with them as we choose, so...
And as far as, that's never gonna happen, ten, on page ten, the bypass.
We need to go.
The state, the houses they took on, off of Stark Road that were there, they're putting them up for sale.
And also, I guess it's not gonna, where they took Bittersweet Greenhouse?
Yeah.
And that's not, that's not gonna come through there?
They said, the, the town of Conway, they told them those houses, because I have a friend that lost his house, you know, and the state's gonna put them up, sell them and sell some of the stuff up front.
But let's start right at the beginning.
That's one way.
Uh, that's one way to start anyway. And, let's, you know, I'm gonna mark up my copy, but any other way would be fine. Sarah has the sheet from the state.
Yeah, well, what it says, the RSA says, "The master plan shall be a set of statements and land use and development principles for the municipality with such accompanying maps, diagrams, charts and descriptions as to give legal standing to the implementation ordinances and other measures of the planning board." So this is kind, this is, master plan is the overall mission statement, if you will, our goals, what our overlying principles are that we then use to justify the ordinances that we, we put out. And that's, well, it's just...
The master plan is the four, or four zoning ordinances.
Right.
There are a few zoning ordinances that cannot be enacted unless they are dealt with in the master plan. So if you wanted to have impact fees, it has to be in the master plan first that the town, in order to be compensated for the impact of development, can levy impact fees. town, in order to be compensated for the impact of development, can levy impact fees. But that has to be in the-
And it doesn't necessarily have to be specific. It could be a more general statement as to that development in the town, um, should be, um, match the, a balance being kept between what is done to the town, what the town gets back from it, or some statement.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we're at purpose.
So, I'm looking at purpose, and the first two paragraphs, I mean, we can almost just leave alone. Until you get to the third one, it starts saying, "The background studies for the 2003 master plan or the Wild River Conservation Plan," which is no longer, you know, we didn't know what we're going to use, "we're gonna use the build-out analysis, uh, the full 2001 community survey." So, a lot of this is not applicable, but that last paragraph, we need to change it to, like, the build-out analysis performed by North Country Council.
Okay, so that's kind of rewording, we'll do.
Yeah.
We can't do that right now, but we do it at the, after we-
Basically, what says in this step of the planning, the third line?
Yeah.
Like, just if you removed before that, then we just add, you know, that.
Right.
Yeah. But after, I mean, even some of, "The needs of the town are tempered with the realities of limited resources, plus a variety of potentially conflicting sentiments, including the wish to keep regulations simple and not cumbersome, the desire to keep the town looking as it traditionally has, a need to maintain the vitality of the local economy." Do we want to keep that, or, or is that something we want to change after the build-out analysis?
I don't see any problem with that.
Because of the sentiment, really.
Yeah.
Right. Because I think we do agree with it, that Jackson's gonna stay as a resort, or that tourism is our major economic, um, the economy is tourism-based. So, it's just that first, um, three lines would have to be reworded or updated.
Updated.
Yeah.
So, it's updated. But it's the next paragraph, the visions, that has to be all updated. And we, we looked at, reexamined.
And that's gonna become a very important part of the whole master plan, is that statement, because that's gonna be, at the beginning, a summation of the direction that the town wants to go in. And I say "the town" because we can come up with words, and that's a place that I think we're gonna look for a lot of input, you know, keep working the words, work it down, get it so that we can agree on a statement.
Well, I think, I don't think the sentiments that are in that statement have changed.
Changed at all. Yeah, I kind of agree with you, Sarah. I mean, it's, it's pretty well-written.
Mm-huh.
Want to add to it or something, but, but I don't, I don't see we need to detract.
I guess it was just the line that said, um, "In addition, Jackson's location and one edge of the White Mountain National Forest makes it a prime target for growth." That just was, that line caught me because of the whole impact city, what we're talking about. Just that sentence, you know, because we need to-
Oh, you, you want to take that out?
Yeah, I want to take it out, I'm just saying it's-
Yeah.
And that may not-
Be as applicable.
Right, because we certainly haven't had much room. Maybe.
So, we'd start with "in addition," through "growth," and take it out?
Yeah. Take that whole sentence out, right?
Mm-huh.
Because the master plan is supposed to, I mean, what the RSAs are saying, it's, it's totally looking forward, what, what do you, where is your town going and how are you gonna get there? You know, what's, what are gonna be your guiding, guiding principles? So, future development in Jackson, we can start with theirs.
And I don't want to keep relying on the build-out analysis, but that will help us in the words that we're gonna wanna put in or add to any statement.
Yeah, good point.
Because that's really what's gonna tell us, you know, what's possible.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna obviously deal with the Route sixteen corridor, um, you know, I think we're gonna ask about, uh, turning the upper end of it into a rural residential and not commercial.
I thought that was already voted on.
We just voted it last match.
Yeah.
It is voted that way. Yeah, to keep it as a rural residential, right?
To keep it as commercial.
A commercial?
Yes.
It's commercial from the village to-
All the way to the Dana Place. You've got the river. You can't put anything beside the river.
Oh, I didn't realize it was, um, commercial.
Yeah, it's the only thing we have.
The village district.
It's called village districts, not commercial.
Oh, I thought, I thought the only district was just-
No, it's all the way up sixteen.
Oh, that's, that's a shame.
And everything else is rural residential.
You've got the river. You can't develop on the river.
No, you can't, you can't.
And most of the other is straight up and down.
Yeah.
So, it's really, it's commercial, but if someone's looking, to me, and maybe I look at it stupid, but if someone's not owned a house there, and it's in the commercial district, and you turn them around and vote it out, you've just devalued his property. He may have owned it for fifty years.
Well, either here or there, Dick's right, is we can do what we can, but without the build-out analysis, we're, you know, we can, we can do what we can, keep moving along here, you know, same-
That's the first, that's the first thing we're adding into this, is the information.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go through and see what pieces we do want to keep.
Yeah, so we've already taken out, you know, four or five sentences. We may have to replace them.
Okay, so, that last overall land use and development goal, no major problems with that statement at this time?
No.
Enforce land use regulations reasonably and uniformly. Okay.
I don't see how you can argue with that.
Well-
Uniformly?
Same for everyone.
Yeah.
Yep, it doesn't work that way, but that's-
We try.
So, even the first policy may not fly anymore. You know, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense suddenly. The permitting process necessary for development will require careful review and strict adherence.
Okay.
I mean, that's okay, that wording, but it-
Right, because we're not gonna continue to require building permits to be issued by the selectmen because the-
That objective can come out.
Yeah, that's correct.
The building inspector does the permits, that all get-
So, that objective goes.
Continue to require subdivision review by the planning board prior to approval of any subdivision. That's a good statement.
But we may need to add in here, you know, after the build-out analysis.
And the policy permitting is out.
And the next policy is unclear.
I have a silly question, is the word continue? I'm just looking at it in a couple of places, it looks like, when I read, it looks like it's a carryover. The other things are carryovers, but they don't have that, so.
Uh, okay, we can probably edit that out and just say, "require building permits" or "require subdivision review."
So, I look at it, I know some of these things were carryovers from before, but it says, you know, makes it sound like it's a new thing, because it just says continue, just a verbiage.
Right, and it was from, in this, is the carryover from the last?
Yeah, some of these were carryovers, they're just not saying continue, it says to the word "to."
So, uh-
Just require subdivision review.
Yeah, we don't have to.
We don't know on the next policy.
Continue to-
Uh, "reduce the non-conformity of existing land uses and structures whenever the opportunity arises."
But we don't know if that's gonna be a policy going forward. We can't determine that.
Well, we can discuss it.
Yes, you can.
Certainly, if the idea of easing the restrictions on setback and setbacks from the property line, from the road, if you went to twenty-five feet and fifteen feet, you would still have some buildings non-conforming, that you wouldn't want to expand the non-conformity.
Correct. But I don't know if this is gonna be a pertinent policy going forward until we know. In other words, some of our determinations may be that, uh, as an example, I always use the two houses across the street. We talked about making more affordable houses, you know, for younger people, maybe we'd want to, you know, restrict the volume so that they could build a second story and, and turn that into a two-family home. So, decrease the non-confor- making this as a policy right now, saying that we're gonna decrease the non-conforming of existing land uses, we don't know that yet. You know, that's all, that's, you know, I mean, we may determine that we should increase the non-conformity.
No, what you're saying, what, the other way around is that, that if you're, non-conformity means to, um, conforming to the law of the land right now, and if we change the regulations, then it may be that something that was non-conforming before now becomes conforming, if you make the-
But this is a policy that we're setting, as you were saying, what we may do for the next ten years, so, do we not make that a policy?
I find this actually confusing. I've read it like ten times, and I'm not really sure what it's saying.
I just don't know if we want to set it as a policy now.
I'm saying, I still understand, but I'm being honest.
Okay, whatever our regulations end up being, I think we want people to adhere to the regulation and not, um, increase whatever we decide.
But maybe we can word that differently.
This makes sense to me, I'm not saying-
Yeah, that's what I-
Sarah, what, what it means is that you have buildings and uses that are there, and, I mean, zoning has only been in since the seventies, so there's, Jack, there was a lot of Jackson here before the seventies. So, anything that was there that may not conform to the regulations that were put in are, were allowed to stay there, which is called grandfather. And so, what this statement is saying is that, well, you know, we, we know that there are these structures and uses that are non-conforming, but if it, if the opportunity, or whenever the opportunity arises, then if, if it's possible to get things more into conformity of the regulations, and so that regulations are uniformly applied through the whole town, then do so. It's not saying, you know, just go out on a witch hunt and find people who aren't conforming and, and make them conform. It's just that when the opportunity arises, then let's, let's try to get things more conforming.
Still confusing to me, and, and I kind of agree with Darren. It's just the way this is worded, it sounds like this is a policy we're gonna set going forward for the next ten years. And it sounds as if we're not going to, and, and it just, it's the way it's worded.
I guess it's all the positioning.
I know what you're saying, it makes sense, but it's the way it's worded.
I guess it's also the positioning of it, and all of a sudden, you read this, and this is the second thing you read. That's, I guess, also what strikes me, that you think they would be listed in importance, and, you know, and these are the-
Good point.
So, I look at that saying, wow, that's something that's very important to the town of Jackson, and that's why I'm trying to understand that. I understand what the intent is, but I'm reading it, and it's-
All right, so, yeah.
Okay, but-
You understand, I'm saying, like, upside-down pyramid, you have the most important things down to the trivial things.
But say, in another meeting, would you have, would you work on those words? Would you find words that you like, or you find more expressive of the idea?
What I've found is that it's very hard to work on wording in a committee setting, and that I-
That's why I say, you know, if you did it and then came up with those words or that statement, and then we could, you know-
So, why, um-
It's like having the paper.
No, I understand.
The paper trail is great, because-
I guess I was looking at, one is looking at where it is, also jumping out of big minds. This was buried, you wouldn't be, it's a big, I wouldn't, you would say anything about it.
I wrapped this in parentheses and just said, "Let's work on it."
Mm-huh.
I, I think maybe our time might be best spent by just going through, and if we find areas that-
Need work.
-need work, let's just flag them as to why they need-
But you, you would be what I'm saying about the order of town.
Oh, I agree, I've already made a note online, so saying, get it in a different position of the document.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because honestly, if it was buried lower down, I don't think I'd even say boo about it.
Yeah, you might be right.
That's what I'm saying.
This is the number-two thing on the master plan.
Right, I think natural resources-
You think the priority's too high.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, where it is physically on the paper makes it seem like priority. It may not be a priority, but it appears that way.
That might be a good note, the regulatory goal could be moved.
Because it may not, because that makes sense, if it was lower, I wouldn't think twice about it.
Okay.
I think we should, you know, in reading, figure out what we want to set, state, and where.
And then let's get a lot of-
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind moving the regulatory goal, yeah.
So, I wouldn't go eyes, but that's how my mind works.
All right, natural resources.
Okay, move to a lower position, lower being relative. Flag the words for that, um-
Well, I'm sorry, but that's, I guess that's the only place it can go, right? Because that's the only place we have regulatory goal, or that big other.
No, the weekend.
Well, we can move the whole section.
We can move that whole thing.
You know, we can have natural resources first.
Yeah, put down natural municipal services or down, and I think we agree with it.
Natural resources and village character actually are the most important, all the economy, municipal services.
What is an aquifer recharge area?
An aquifer is underwater, and the recharge area would be the watershed that feeds it.
Okay, thanks.
The aquifer recharge area for Nantucket is south of Route twenty-five in Osiphe, and they have traced it with a radioactive dye.
Wow.
And it goes down in that swamp, there's a big wetland to the south.
For Nantucket, is that?
For Nantucket.
Wow.
And, I know, I can't remember what year, um, no, but it was Melvin Thompson offered Nantucket, Miami State, if they cared to follow their water source, which I thought was kind of clever. Anyway, that's where, it's the recharge area, that's where, you know, the water accumulates that gets into the aquifer. Is that about what Sarah said?
Mm-huh.
Okay, natural resources, protect and conserve Jackson's natural resource areas, hills, woodlands, scenic vistas. I don't think anybody has any problem with that.
What is a view shed?
Just the, it's a view, whether, whether, you know, my point of view, it's the top of the mountain, looking up and seeing just houses, or, or breaking the trees, or a view, you know, if you're a man.
View shed, it's standing in a certain place and wanting to see.
What you got out there?
Yeah, like the view from a scenic, scenic outlet, scenic, um-
Okay, so that- Okay, so that starts with a good statement.
The policy seems good.
Okay. Objectives.
I'm going to the second objective, as much as I love it, we may find that that one, after the field out analysis, whether or not it's still viable, so I'm, I'm saying develop a plan to facilitate protection, again, this is a goal over the next ten years of selected lands through acquisition by the town or by appropriate conservation, as much as I, you know, I agree with that and like to see it happen, I'm not sure if that's what we're going to find, is it, are we? Is that up to debate?
I think that would still stay the same, I mean, that's just an objective, it could be, there could be less land identified, but it's still the same, in my mind.
So we still want people to, whoever these people might be, to locate state or federal funding mechanisms because nobody did it the last ten years. You know, but, but it's a good point, I mean, I like it, I think we should identify potential local state or federal funding. I don't see a reason to take that out, but the other part is, I mean, are we sure that's going to be a policy going forward? It could be an objective, however.
But isn't this under the heading of a goal?
Okay, but is this still our goal, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I think this particular policy is just focusing in on sensitive areas where threatened species, and so unique areas, things that might be special, and it's that first objective identifying those, it's actually something that the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust people are doing throughout the whole area and in Jackson as well. And so, and they are working on trying to get certain key areas to get some protection on.
I'm aware of that, and I'm for it, and I promote it, but I'm just wondering if after our maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading too much into it, I just thought it reads to me that we're making it a goal to appropriate land for conservation, is that, is the town doing that?
I don't think appropriate is, is an appropriate word there, because that is not what's going on.
No, no, it's.
Because no land is appropriated.
No, the word appropriate in there is an adjective, not a verb, please.
Right. No, I know appropriate, but I, I use that word, maybe I used the word, wrong word, but it's acquisition by the town.
The way I look at this is nothing inflammatory here, I think it's just a sentiment of saying, we live in this town, if we could do these things, it would be great. And I don't think we should remove it or touch it.
Right, and to me, what it says is that the selectmen should not somehow stand in the way of anything that may go forward with an organization like the Saco, Upper Saco Land Trust. If anything, help them, because they're not appropriating land, they're saving open spaces.
Yeah, and having this as part of our goals, in, in many cases, having it in the master plan then gives credence to things that might happen in the future. So I think by having, you know, the amount of detail that we have in here is good, because we try to cover all the bases so that we're our overall mission of what we want Jackson to be.
The way I look at this is, is a document of yours, or another country, you come here, you read this, you want to learn about the town of Jackson, you lose here, I mean, this is great to have natural resources, to have all this information here, I mean, that tells a lot about people that live here and what they want, that's how I look at this.
That's good.
And, and I think that's what this document will do. Anybody that moves into town will be able to read it and say, oh, that sounds good, you know, good sentiments anyway.
Say we're going to develop a plan to facilitate protection. What is that plan, or, I don't know, I want to.
Well, it's under, it's under a goal, it is a goal.
It's a goal, period.
Okay, so we're not actually going to develop a plan, or just taking it as a goal?
No, this is not a place to develop plans, it's really.
Like a wish list.
A wish list of things we'd like to see done, and, you know, if we as a planning board had meetings once a week, I think we could really get into a lot of this.
It's a list of goals, and you've got twenty, and if you get two done in that ten-year period, then that's great.
Just like getting a master plan done every ten years, I mean, it's a lot of work and it takes a lot of time.
I, I wrote the word flying next to that paragraph, so that's fine with me.
Finest find. Okay. So, moving along now to page three. Policy, the integrity of the soil shall be protected.
Just going back one, sorry.
Oh, I haven't finished.
Possibility of participation in the Stan's Landing Community Heritage Investment Program, is there still one?
Oh, I've told you that too.
Yeah, is, is that program still in existence even?
Atlantic Community Heritage.
Is that LCHIP, is that what that is? Oh, okay.
And I, I don't know what its funding situation is at the moment.
But it's still there.
Yeah, it depends on whether the state legislature funds it or not.
So how about the next one?
It's still around, I don't think it has much money at the moment.
Then the, the next one, I don't want to get into it, feasibility of alternative methods of land protection. Is that valid? Housing bonuses, public-private partnerships.
I think the word housing bonuses doesn't make sense, there's no context to explain what that means.
But we still can identify and evaluate the feasibility of alternative methods of land protection, such as.
Yeah, I was thinking of the word housing bonuses, because that's like, unless that's identified, defined somewhere here what that means, somewhere else in the document, I don't know what housing bonuses means.
I'm not sure, I know development rights, methods of land protection. What does that mean?
Development rights. Oh, that would be putting in conservation use of the land.
Oh, development, okay, oh, okay, the way it's, yeah, but you've got it.
Should we just strike housing bonuses?
It's all right with me to, because I don't know what a housing bonus is.
Actually, probably.
Somewhere else?
Yeah, do we talk about housing?
No, we haven't gotten there, that's, we kind of municipal.
Please, Captain, highlight the word, move back to us.
All right, so what are we dealing with now?
I, I, I'm with him on questioning the housing bonuses.
Housing bonuses, all right, well, let's just put that as a question.
Question, okay.
Dick, I was just saying, I don't know. I have a limited vocabulary, so.
I think we need to have vets here to.
But I look at these things as a late person reading them.
That's great, that's great.
It's like the New York Times is written, you know, through a third grader.
No, that's, well, you should, though. If you can't understand it, we can't understand it.
Okay, the housing bonuses were, if a developer came in and proposed a multi-unit, and then the, the town has it in its ordinances to say, okay, if you do two low-income units, we will allow you a bonus, you can develop more units than you would have.
My question is, though, is that, I understand that, but do we call that a housing bonus somewhere? It's just the word.
Yeah, it's the word, this, this may have been pertinent in two thousand thirty, but.
Well, it's the word, it's the idea, is what it's expressing, so I've bracketed it, and we'll see if we can find better words.
I guess it's because I'm looking, it's under the heading of natural resources, and I.
Well, it impacts, it's all soils, septic, and our zoning ordinances, how much can you put on eight acres, say you had eight acres, how many units can you put on there, well, we may, as a town, say, well, you, you can only put four units on there. But you can design a septic system that would accept six units. State, you know, approved septic system, so you get those two bonus units, but as I said, I bracketed it, looking for better words.
Should that be under the next part where the integrity of soils of Jackson, should maybe that be put over into that section maybe?
Where are you?
I'm just.
On the top of page three, we're dealing with the integrity of the soils of Jackson.
The last sentence, policy on page, whatever it is, this seems to be okay. The last two.
Are you still back?
Yeah, yeah.
Conservation of lands, important, Jackson's character show.
I just want to skip over it.
Upper Saco Valley Land Trust is working on this specifically. I don't think we're skipping it.
This whole next paragraph, I have, weren't we going to get Burr in here to talk to us about soil and, or no? Did we, I mean, was, last meeting, you know, he was supposed to show up, but he forgot to, was.
That was on.
Yeah, that was all about housing, he wasn't going to talk to us about septic?
Well, I, I talked to him about it, and he gave me the two ideas that he had. I'm sure if you, I don't know, what are you looking for, information?
Yeah.
About what, septic design?
Yeah, our septic design and what the state is, and whether or not we should stay with ours and.
Jackson's more strict than the state.
State, and see what he feels about, you know, where, where the state of our septic design is and our ordinances.
Septic design is septic design. It's how much, how many units we'll allow on an area of land, and that's been our choice.
To do soil.
Yeah, it's, that's how you design a septic system, is you do a test pit and see what the percolation rate is.
And DeGuay is, is the town of Jackson stricter than the state? I don't know.
It goes back a long ways, we have various times, we had, what, a two acre?
Yeah, years ago, they voted that out, they had two acres out of Village District.
Yeah, that's what our, yeah.
And then they voted it out, it went by soil density.
Yeah, minimum, lots of that sort of time.
Yeah, probably in the early eighties, right, yeah, it was with the wild.
Oh, God, I can't remember.
Well, it's been. And what is the state then, if, if Jackson's by, isn't the state by soil as well?
It's just, theirs is a higher grade, more intensive, I mean, if they have a bigger lot, Jackson's standards and state.
Oh, okay, Jackson's is. Jackson's is more specific, and the state has more general regulations. Oh, would it be, would it be better to use the state's then to ease up on housing then, or?
Well, that's a, it can be a sticky wicket, because then you start clumping, and you're intensifying septic systems in an area. So you, you know, you cut down lot sizes, and, well, that impact is more severe then. That's what goes into the groundwater, that's what doesn't have the time, the time to clean itself, that's what it does, that's what a septic system does.
And as we, if there's more development in, in Jackson, pretty much all the easy land has been developed, and those, those areas that are. Like on the top of Tyrell. Yeah, right.
And on the ledge, you know, they, you get those really bad situations, and you're not, what the septic system does also is give you time, it slows that whole migration of effluent down.
Okay. Gives it time for the sewers to cleanse it, I guess is the word.
Yeah, well, that's what it does.
And even though you say, well, Jackson's more stringent than the state regulations, remember, the state regulations are for the whole state, and Jackson's situation is, is a little bit more, I mean, our land is a little more challenging than.
And I think the, as I read down the second objective, kind of covers it, review and amend the zoning ordinance as necessary to accommodate improvements in the understanding of the definition and capabilities of the septic, that, that's kind of covers.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I still would like to talk to Burr, because I don't always understand state regs versus.
Well, the state is the minimum, and you're.
But, but it's the converse, that the state won't review a document unless it's approved by the town of Jackson, then you can't submit it. And then theirs is, yeah, you send them in, but you have to meet Jackson's first.
Right.
Yeah, they were just discussing the selectmen's meeting, a couple. You were there with me, the, the selectmen's meeting about that exact same thing, they had to get approval from the town before they could. Yes.
The state won't, no, or Jackson, they won't review a document.
Correct, yes.
That might be a little problem in our ordinance, right, haven't we run into this before, and Burr just kind of ignores it?
No, I don't think it is, because.
Where we.
I went through all this first hand.
Oh, yeah, okay.
No, it's, it's up to the town what they want to enforce, and we have this, and happens to be more strict than the state, so the state acknowledges that, and the state's, they recognize it, so they won't look at any documents without the seal of approval by the town of Jackson. That's how they handle it.
Well said.
So we don't want to touch this?
Well, I mean, I don't know what to touch it with a magic marker.
I think it's been in effect for quite a while, and it, and it works pretty good. You tried to monkey with them sometimes, a small town I grew up with, we, they thought it would be nice to just say, you have to have a minimum of four acre lot to build in the town, and the state said, no, no, you can't do that. And they nullified it and everything, they said, all you have to do is, is follow the rules and regulations of, what was it called, Title Three then, and, so you did, and found out that with the soils in our small town, you needed four acres.
Well, that's it, I mean, it, it's, a lot of it is what the water flowed through the soils.
Yeah.
Because that whole septic thing is to, you know, keep the rivers and streams as clean as possible.
I see, I guess, keep going back to this, this is just goals versus the actual verbiage that's in the zoning, you know, that's what's really there, this is just saying, overview or.
Okay, okay.
So I think we're okay to say these things and move on. Because you can go into the ordinance, it will tell you, it gives you the rest of the soil text and all that, breaks it down.
Very specifically.
And I said, I, what I'm looking at is the context of, this is just goals, it's just saying, you know, like the last thing we looked at, it talks about minimizing erosion and soil damage, well, that's obviously covered in more detail in the ordinances, and that's changing in all time, I mean, those are dynamic things.
But being aware that if we set a goal, like, and, and I'm not just being argumentative here, sorry. And if we set a goal that says to continue to enforce the minimum lot size based on soil type, that allows now for the next ten years that we can't change our minds, because we set that as a goal in the master plan, isn't that?
No.
Okay.
We can.
No, that'd be changed by a vote by the town.
Right. The town votes for anything they want. We're giving it guidance, but.
If they were to ignore this, the town?
It would have to.
This, and I think it states it in the, this is not a legal document. We create the legal documents from this. But it, it goes any way the will of the town goes.
And it can be used, I think, to, sometimes it's guidance or, I think there are, you know, some legal cases where it's kind of ambiguous, is, you know, what is meant? And that they go back into the statement of purpose of all the zoning ordinance. Or even more statements, the master plan from which the ordinance are supposed to be driven.
Well, the ZBA uses the master plan a lot.
Well, if you just read this, it says, the following goals, policies, objectives form a work plan to assist local decision makers in a variety of settings. It says, it also says, the first line says, is provide direction. And this is just really a summary of what we want, where we're gonna go. It's not a bio.
No, and, and they specifically say, this is not a legal document.
It's just a guideline.
And also, it is not approved by the town. We approve it.
Well, that's true.
As a board. We have a public meeting, hearing.
So that's why, that's how I look at this. That's why I look at words like housing bonus, then what does that mean?
Yeah.
Saying, just so it's, it's clear. But to say, we didn't perform this in the ten years where default somebody is not.
No.
It's just, this is just something we wanna do or these, I think, are recognized.
Well, I'm asking the question just because maybe I don't understand. I, I've heard the ZBA use this document over and over. They're keeping on the decision making as, but this is what the town directed us and this is where we're headed. And so that, that was my concern. That's all it is, is a concern.
And about the context that they were trying to overrule something where they couldn't cite a zoning plan was there as something that we're, we're bound to.
So moving word along.
Thank you. Where are you?
Middle district.
Okay, middle policy, the high quality. Local water resources shall be preserved. Local land uses that might cause water quality degradation shall be prohibited. I like that.
Yeah.
I like water. I'm lucky enough to have the best water in Jackson.
As long as it isn't the water precinct.
I just, I've become a water snob. And I like the water at home the best. I'm serious. I mean, I go places and I go, I don't like this water.
Oh, I know.
Well, it's really not as, I don't travel into Jackson that much, but, yeah, different, you know, even other towns, you know, I just don't like the treated water. And I have a nice, well, it comes up.
I don't drink water at our store at all.
What?
I don't drink water at our store at all.
When I worked at New England Inn, they used to get the water of Hurricane Mountain Road. And of course, if you had rain. It's a good thing they had amber glasses. The look, the color of the water.
I'm on town water. I don't drink water, but Debbie drives all the way to North Conaway and gets gallons and gallons of it. She drinks water.
Oh, out in the.
She won't drink town water.
In the inner village?
Yeah. She, she won't drink this water. I don't drink water, period. Unless it's boiled and.
So are we okay with this?
I'm, I'm looking down this one and I like everything on it.
Okay.
Local water sources.
The next one.
We're to the hillside and ridge lines.
And the objective, develop a steep slope and hillside development ordinance.
Okay, that didn't work.
It's been tried and it didn't get very far.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Do we wanna strike that?
No. I think it's a noble goal. The question is, how can you do it and be reasonable?
Make it acceptable. It was, it was hard to find words because I believe that it, one of the problems, that it didn't cover all of town. It was very specific. And I think it has to be more general, if it's going to be.
Yeah.
You know, and anytime that you're absolutely limiting development, you're always gonna have a bump. But it, it could be a goal because going back into, you know, the view shed thing, remember the view shed word?
I do remember that.
I knew you would. You know, that's part of it. Larry stated it, you know, I'm gonna look out from my house and see duck's head and, you know, trees? Or am I gonna see lights and condominiums?
Well, that was my next question. This has got light pollution and I don't remember.
They have a light ordinance.
There is a light ordinance.
Do you remember how a duck's head fell after the old one did?
Yes.
It did almost the same day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Save the night sky was the name of the light ordinance. And you're not supposed to be able to look into the hotspot of the light on outdoor flood. So they should be downlighting. Parking lot lights shouldn't have a light, light spillage. They should be downlights. So it's just an idea to, you know.
I know, the commercial, I was aware of the residential, there was light pollution. When they made the ordinance.
Any place you put a light, there's light pollution. This, this morning, bright and early, it was beautiful. Duck's head was up there and the sky was black and those diamonds were shining all around. It was nice.
And then the first objective says develop a steep slope and hillside development, which we kinda did do.
Tapped at one of the pieces on it.
What do we have for scenic vistas?
Anywhere you look.
From my house, I have the back side of Kearsarge.
Is there pull hours up, is that what, on the road or?
No, it's just.
Oh, you're just saying your, oh, your view. Yeah, I, I just.
I think I remember reading somewhere in here that they do say some of the scenic vistas in here somewhere. Isn't there here? Oh, you mean in the background? Somewhere along in here, they have some areas they, they designated if you read further in.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think, you know, Jackson Falls.
I thought it was what was on there. There's.
Profile.
That's another one, wasn't there? Yep, profile. It's in there somewhere.
I guess I.
Yeah, I just read it.
Well, what objective is it, inventory?
Yeah. History. All right. So are we, we're, light pollution and views, night sky and all that, we're.
Yeah, develop a vista, view shed protection ordinance. Do we wanna just keep that in there as a good goal or?
Yeah. Try to keep. And then we'll go to village character?
Yeah. The first objective is, question mark.
What, review the present boundaries of the village district?
Yeah, we just had, like you said, a vote.
We just voted in one.
Right. That has been.
So is that gonna strike it for the future one?
Um, I think we should discuss it. I, I think that when some other members are here, then probably are gonna push for it because they're unhappy with the vote. But I, I think that, I think the vote was pretty conclusive. I think people.
I think it's confusing because of the timeliness here and it's also the legality of this. So there's just two things here that really are.
Right, I, I could, I, I could let it go, but, you know, we can certainly question it and. Because again, it's the planning board that's gonna come up with the words and the, and the whole thing. We're gonna have a, a hearing, so we have further input from the community. So we're not just isolated from, you know, that. But, you know, we're gonna come up with the words for the whole thing, so. Retain, retain the village appearance. Now, we could just keep going here till midnight tonight, but I would like to ask. I have a theory on meetings that, you know, they only are productive for about an hour and a half, sometimes two hours. After that, I, I don't think much gets done. So I would be in favor of, you know, I, I wanna keep working. I'm not trying to run off and watch football or something like that, but.
I'm with you.
But, you know, we, we have to think about being, you know, fair, fair to ourselves.
Let's get a little further following.
All right.
So we were gonna put a question mark at least on that.
Yes, okay.
Let's finish this up and we'll stop at the economy.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So Dick, we'll just finish this up entirely, we'll stop at the, the economy goal at the top of page five.
Yeah, that's a great place to, I'm gonna put a big flag there so I don't go beyond. And this is, this is the stop flag.
The second objective, it's not a big goal to keep on here. Whether we can or not is another thing, but it's, if, if we're just putting it as goals. Development, rebuild. The style and scale of the greatest number of nearby buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, we do want that, I think.
There are towns that have regulations on color, style, texture, whether you can have shingles, clavards, all of it. But maybe in the future, to keep that New England village look, something will be passed. But I don't, I don't think it's a bad starting place to say, you know, try to retain the character of the village. Because that's, this loop is what people come to.
The next one. A long range plan for the use of town property to best meet the needs of the town.
That's a pretty thing to keep in there.
Oh, no, it is. I'm just, it's more a question. Is that something that we're gonna, you know, are we just.
It's so vague.
Yes, I mean.
Well, we've done far with that. With all the change with the.
Library.
Library and the Whitney Center.
Well, I guess it was thinking, a question was, is that something we wanna drill into more specifically to say? Is something we wanna identify, I guess?
Okay, well, we've, we could identify, I don't know if it's.
I mean, it's fine leaving a blank, I'm just.
All the town held properties.
Sorry?
We could inventory all the town held properties. There aren't that many.
We'll get down to the build out mails, won't we?
Right, we will. And we have Prospect Farm, you know, the grazing garage.
Oh, it's written here to someplace.
Yes, it is. It's all listed.
We'll leave it simple.
So it's there. We should develop the town properties in an appropriate manner. So maybe we'll find other words that make it more appropriate, but.
I'm just thinking about the, the previous library that's just to my forefront of my mind.
I think we get more depth later.
Yeah.
I wanna, I'll talk to you later about that. I'd like to talk to you later about that.
Sure. Talking to one of the principal's office.
I'd like to talk to you later about.
I didn't do it.
No, no, I said, for good. Maintain the mix of residential and commercial structures currently found in the village. Okay? West Front shops. More of them, you know?
The last objective, boy, it's an impossibility.
Okay, review the existing park, I, I don't wanna run beyond anything, if that's all right.
Oh, go ahead.
If we take it in order, go down the list. Review the existing parking facilities in the village area and require commercial establishments to provide. And we could go beyond that and not lay it all on the commercial establishments. But we have to deal with parking in the village somehow.
Well, now we have that area, now by the library right here is public parking. That, that was a very nice thing to put in there for, you know, when the races used to take place, people used to park there. So that's, that is one area that we have designated as that.
And it may take more, I don't know, I don't wanna say signage because we have enough signs on. But somehow make it more inviting. To park there.
They did clean it up quite a bit.
They have cleaned it up.
But even here, we can increase the parking. And like you said, if you make it more inviting, like they did in Bridgeton, if you've ever gone to Bridgeton, they put all their parking behind the town and they built all these beautiful walkways and flowers. You wanna park back there and walk into the village.
Cause it's a nice walk.
We don't have that, I don't think. We do have some area here.
You could expand away.
Yeah, we could expand here.
We need to go the other way and make it less inviting to park in the half with parking spaces along the road that cause the cars to get so close.
The state painted it wrong this time. I mean, I'm sorry, they scored on.
But we can't take away.
So this says two things, other is about the commercial buildings. It says, what's the formula for a commercial building?
It is in there.
Depending on what kind of building it is.
A restaurant.
Yeah, restaurants, six by seats.
Seats and others, a hundred, two hundred feet.
Mine is one for every two hundred square.
Square feet.
We could, we could park as they do in, in England and in Portugal I've seen. You, you just, oh, you run up and you put half of your car on the sidewalk.
Oh, it's pandemic.
Yeah, I've seen it here. From Massachusetts, they'll park anywhere anyway.
We could require smaller cars.
Yeah, small, small cars.
We can make it narrower or shorter, so. But we can leave this, I guess.
Okay. So parking is something we, we should continue, you know, the discussion and look at. I'm not sure, some, you know.
Maybe someday we'll figure an answer.
Going back to the last objective, however, is that feasible to have in there?
The mix of residential and commercial?
No. Require commercial development to place parking areas beside.
Oh, the next one down. I thought you were going back for some reason.
Not between, though. Is it even feasible? I mean, we can't.
No, really isn't. Main street.
It was, it is. Yeah, you can't.
Well, like the tavern has some parking out back.
And Snowflake did.
The Snowflake has some parking, back and side.
So we're, we're feasible or something like that? We're, we're practical or?
You do have the town hall.
We could leave that in there and just say, we're practical.
I think that, you know, uphill of the town hall could be developed into better looking parking. You know, we may have to spring for some pavement and some.
And there's a nice place to do the more inviting.
You know, do some drainage and really, that would, if it looked better, I think more people would park there. Cause really, it's not that fun to walk around. I mean, Jackson is, you walk the loop. You run into everybody.
Even this, even this parking lot here would be, meaning the tennis courts would be, I think, more usable if it looked a little more user friendly at the entrance. We've done some work, but if it was more inviting and it didn't look like, you know, if you're from a city, that parking lot there looks like you're gonna leave your car to be stripped. It does a little. You know, you park your car kind in the woods.
I guess to me, the advocate is, is a question of the frequency of the demand. And that would be like a Wildcrack, the festival. that would be like a Wildcrack, the festival, the Fourth of May, so there's, you know, and on those nights.
This weekend we'll have, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And in those weekends, when it's this busy, you don't really care because there's other cars there, so you don't feel it.
Yeah, that's true.
But we still do, like the parking at the town hall, this parking, somewhere we can identify making it more attractive.
Right, I think.
Do you want to add an objective there?
Line, rather than signage, maybe lines.
Add an objective saying to make the.
Parking more attractive in the village. I like that.
Make pretty parking.
No signs.
No, I, I got right away from the signage thing because I agree with you on, you know.
You go around the mall, how many signs?
What do you think of this last objective? They require commercial buildings to place parking areas beside or behind buildings, not between buildings in the street.
Well, that's full notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
We can.
But this is, I look at this as for development of a commercial building, for a new building.
Yeah.
Put it under, under the building.
Well, maybe you could add, we could add that and require, well, it is require commercial development, that in other words, not already developed. So it does say that, doesn't it?
And just add a where feasible in there.
Yeah, where it's more practical, feasible. So we're just going to alter that one.
Okay, we're moving on to rural atmosphere?
Yep.
Where it says the encourage use of underground utilities where, wherever feasible, is there underground utilities along the, the village loop?
No.
No.
I don't think there was, okay.
Absolutely not.
Where would you put your flags?
Where would you put your flags?
Well.
I, I would do anything to get rid of those wires. If you look at my building and you look through, the number of wires is just unbelievable. And I guess most of these wires go to Berlin. They, all the top wires, the, somebody in the electric company explained to me, they just bypass us and they, because that was Route 16 when they put the poles in, they should just go.
Straight on.
Straight on, but it would cost too much.
Horrendous.
It doesn't go to Berlin.
Or where, somewhere else.
It goes up to Tyrol. They had a three-phase service up to Tyrol when they were running the lifts and everything, which is no longer needed. It, it's not a service that you'd use in a commercial establishment, so, but, believe me, there are no electric lines that run from here to Berlin.
Oh, okay. Somebody explain that to me.
Well, he lied to you, whoever it was. I'd pull him right back in here. He wanted to talk to somebody about that. No, they don't, because I don't think they even go to Pencombe, they stop.
No, it's.
Yeah, Pencombe gets your.
They get their, from Gorham, so I think it ends at the same place, the whole.
Yeah, next time you go open over, watch the, see if there's any lines there.
No, keep your eye on the road. Have your passenger look at the, right.
Doctor back used to read his mail going to the end of Scott.
Otherwise, everything on that looks good to me.
Yeah.
Kathleen, did we have your highlighted?
Oh, yes. I have a lot more to read when we go through the rest of it later, but.
Okay.
Like I said, most of it I thought was really well written. I mean, I, I really did.
We haven't deleted much or changed a whole lot, yeah, I don't think, we don't need.
And that, I think, is a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think we're supposed to be rewriting it.
Well, you said, you said, I think at the last meeting, you know, let's just update it or what do you decide.
Yeah, make it current, make it deal with what we have today.
Yeah, because we're doing it. Yeah, we're just making sure it's up to date. I mean, there are a couple of things that I flagged that are goals that we've, hey, we've done that already, so.
Like the water precinct here has, you know, up the road by Michael Fleming's house and that's Parker's house and Warren Shoemaker's house, and do we really need to put them in there? Does anybody really know who they are? I mean, stuff that, you know, I mean, it's basically, if, if, there was hardly anything, I sense that we are here for the 2000, we need to update that, you know.
Oh, yeah, there's some of them.
But basically, I thought it was extremely well written.
Wow, it took a long time.
Well, we, that's, well, we started and had to do that.
But that is, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, any old business? Any new business? Come on, help me out. I'm a little disheartened. So, here.